Turn your mic on, Mayor, please.
Good morning. We'll start over. Call the council order on November 17th for our city council meeting. You join me in the invocation. Father, we're grateful for this new day and the cool breezes. We pray that you would guide us and direct us in all the decisions that we make for the community. We pray, Father, for our country. And we pray for those that are serving our country in uniform here and abroad. Keep them safe. And we're reminded, particularly at this time of year, of how thankful we are for them, the medical providers, and all that are addressing the needs of all our citizens. Guide us and keep us safe in all that we do. These things are asked in your name. Amen. Join me in the pledge to the American flag and then protect the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Huerta, if you'll please call the roll.
Mayor Joe McCombe.
Here.
Council members Roland Barrera.
Here.
Paulette Juarezdo.
Present.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter is not on yet. Ben Molina.
Present.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Here.
City attorney Miles Rizley. Mayor and council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
All right. Thank you. We're glad you're here. This portion of the agenda is for public comment. Ms. Huerta, do we have any public comments that is requested?
No, sir. At this time, we have no phone-in public comments, and we did receive one written public comment, which was provided to you, to the council.
All right. And this is from Larry Cherison, I believe it is, and that's been provided to the council. All right. Thank you very much. Before we go into item number one, I just want to make you aware of a couple of proclamations that we did this morning. We had for the National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, which is November 16 through the 22nd. Very important in bringing awareness to the issue of homelessness and hunger in our community. And I think all of us are sensitive to that, and we want to be supportive of that. And then two, from the Chamber of Commerce, we had the declaration that November the 28th is Small Business Saturday, encouraging people to, after Thanksgiving, to go out and buy local. Try to stay off the internet if you can. The local businesses need your business. I would suggest you don't have to wait till the 28th. You can start shopping now. But Small Business Saturday is designated as November 28th. So let's try to encourage people to support our local businesses and go buying locally. That would be the resolutions and proclamations that we had for the date. Agenda, we got some special consideration items on agendas, items one through three. And the first item is going to be canvassing the general election that was held on November the 3rd. And this is a formal requirement, or state requirement. And so there's a formality that we have to proceed with. And so we'll go to item number one. And that is, it's a one-reading ordinance canvassing returns and declaring the results of the general election held on November the 3rd, 2020, in the City Corpus Christi for the purpose of electing the mayor and eight council members in a special elections on the same date for the adoption of three propositions for bond 2020. So Ms. Huerta, I need to, I've got the list of the election results.
Yes, sir.
And we're required to read the name in each candidate and the number of votes.
Yes, sir.
And then at the end, we'll make sure we, you keep us guided to make sure we do the proper procedure.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll get started. Item number one is the ordinance canvassing the return to the November 3rd general election to elect the mayor and eight council members in a special election held on the same date for the adoption of three propositions in bond 2020. The results of the general election for mayor, Pancho Villa, 3,213; Eric Rodriguez, 4,330; Carolyn Vaughn, 17,198; Priscilla Gonzalez, 5,427; Joe Michael Pettis, 2,793; Roberto Snyder, 284; Joe McCombe, 34,118; John Medina, 2,775; Paulette Juarezdo, 33,366. For council members at large, Liz Pettis, 19,865; Mike Pusly, 34,012; Michael Hunter, 34,020; Myron Grossman, 5,089; Larry White, 9,007; John Martinez, 22,416; Ricardo Hankerson, 2,570; Efrain Frank Ariaga, Jr., 11,334; Richard Diaz, 2,280; Patricia Peña Noyola, 10,028; Brian Rosas, 4,039; Deanna Michelle King, 7,204; John Garcia, 5,492. That was for council members at large. Councilmember District One, Rachel Lynn Cavierto, 5,050; Eli McKay, 1,748; Nellie Valco, 2,906; Billy Lerma, 3,0247. Councilmember District Two, Ben Molina, 7,005; Sylvia Campos, 6,506. District Number Three, Herbert Rubio, 4,616; Roland Barrera, 9,200. Councilmember District Four, Kalen Paxson, 7,090; Jim Klein, 5,781; Greg Smith, 7,155; Ben Grimsbow, 2,313. That was District Four. And District Five, John Lewis, 9,344; Gil Hernandez, 14,031. The following persons received the number of votes required and are declared elected. This will be Michael Hunter, these are at large, Michael Hunter, Mike Pusly, and John Martinez. Councilmember District Two, Ben Molina. Councilmember District Three, Roland Barrera. Councilmember District Five, Gil Hernandez. So congratulations to all those that won the election on November the 3rd. The following person has not received the number of votes required for election. The candidate with the highest and second-highest number of votes are hereby certified replacement in a runoff election as follows: Mayor Joe McCombe, Paulette Juarezdo; Councilmember District One, Rachel Lynn Cavierto and Billy Lerma; Councilmember District Four, Greg Smith, Kalen Paxson. The results of the special election were for Proposition A, which was related to streets. For, 75,385; against, 27,380. City of Corpus Christi Proposition B, which was related to Parks and Recreation. For, 71,911; against, 30,677. City of Corpus Christi Proposition C, which was related to public safety. For, 76,866; and against, 25,709. The majority of qualified voters in the city voted for Proposition A, B, and C. Therefore, the three propositions carried at the special election. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the canvassing of the votes. Shall I move? All right. We have a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Who's seconded? Everett? Mr. Roy? Okay.
Mr. Roy seconds it. Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, unless the secretary to call the roll, and this will be a voice vote.
So per passage of ordinance one on emergency, Mayor McCombe.
Aye.
Councilmembers Hunter. Mr. Hunter's not here. Molina.
Aye.
Roy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Barrera.
Aye.
Juarezdo.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
All right. That takes care of item number one. And then item number two is the one-reading ordinance ordering a runoff election to be held on December the 15th.
Yes, sir.
In the City of Corpus Christi for the election of mayor in councilmember districts one and four, and designating the polling places' locations, enacting provisions, incident, and relating to the subject and the purpose of the ordinance. Ms. Huerta, you want to go over that?
Yes, sir. I have a brief presentation for the council.
All right.
You can queue up that presentation, please. Thank you. So Mayor and council, Rebecca Huerta, City Secretary. The runoff election, as you stated, Mayor, will be held on Tuesday, December the 15th. It'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and those are for the positions you stated: mayor, district one, and district four. City residents registered to vote by Monday, November the 16th may vote in the runoff election. Qualified registered voters who did not vote in the November 3rd, 2020 election can vote in the December 15th runoff election. Friday, December 4th is the last day to apply for an early voting ballot to be voted by mail. And at this time, we have nine early voting sites and 19 Election Day vote centers. Those have been confirmed, although they are subject to change, and I did advise you of some changes we'll go over in a moment. Next slide, please. So early voting, the first day of early voting is Saturday, December the 5th. And we do have weekend voting, Saturday, December the 5th, Sunday, December the 6th. That'll be from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. And that will be held at the Neises County Courthouse on 901 Leopard Street. That's our main early voting place. Monday, December the 7th to Friday, December the 11th, the voting will be held 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we do have nine locations there. In your packet, initially, we had hoped that Padre Island Baptist would be able to participate, and the Valencia, at this time, they're not confirmed, so I have, that is a change from what was in your packet, and that's reflected on this slide. We are looking to add more places, especially, we're looking for a location on the island. That's what we're really going to need, and we're in the process of working with the county clerk to do that now, to identify that location. So that's the list for early voting. Next slide, please. For Election Day, vote centers, citizens can vote at any of these centers on Election Day, which is again December the 15th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have 19 locations identified, which are here. And those are, it's a slight difference from what was in your packet. We did remove those two locations. I forgot to mention, we also changed from Oville Williams to Oak Park Rec. Oak Park Recreation Center, just because it has a little bit higher usage than Oville Williams. And that's a change that you'll see on both early voting and Election Day. So those are the sites now, and again, they are subject to change. We may add, we're working on adding a location on the island. Next slide, please. And those are the remaining locations for Election Day. Next slide, please. So let's talk about next steps. So the canvassing for the runoff election, that's scheduled now for December the 22nd. That's a Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. We'll canvas those votes. We are also going to consider two action items that were requested by staff. We'll need six council members to participate in that, so just so you're aware from a scheduling standpoint. Per the city charter, all council members take office at the first council meeting after the canvas of the runoff election. So that first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January the 12th. So because of COVID, we're going to separate our groups a little bit as far as how we're going to handle certain things that we do on inauguration day. So outgoing council members, there's going to be a gift presentation. We'll do that first at 9:30. Then there'll be the new council swearing in at 10:30, and then the regular council meeting will begin at 11:30. So those will be, that'll be how we handle those events. Next slide, please. So are there any questions at this time?
Any council members have, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Huerta, could you brief us on where we are with the island? It's such an important location to have voting there.
Yes, it is. We've looked at several facilities. There were some fire stations that are there that are not available right now due to COVID. So with, those locations aren't available. We are looking at a Catholic church that's on the island, potentially, that could work. We just haven't received confirmation that they're willing to assist. And we've also looked at Briscoe King Pavilion as well, and that one, at this point, isn't being recommended. It's not ADA accessible. So that's what we've tried.
And in doing this, so is it the city secretary or the county clerk? What does it take so, to get these locations? How is that working? So are you working with the clerk's office?
We work with the clerk's office, yeah, per our contract, to try to find a location. If it's a city facility, we have much more flexibility and lower costs, too, in using that. But there aren't many on the island, as you know, so we do work with the clerk, and she's assured as she is, she understands the importance of having a location in that area.
Okay. So she and you are looking very diligently at securing, when do you think we'll have an idea? What's our deadlines on that?
Our deadline, we publish a notice of the polling places. That deadline is December the 4th. That's so late that we probably, I would want to get this done by next week, certainly.
We have a week or two then to get it.
Yes, sir, to firm that up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And, you know, and we've spoken to you as well and looked at some of the recommendations you've made, too.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody virtual that has a comment? Hearing none. We need a motion to approve your recommendation on item two. Is that?
Yes, sir. The ordinance, a motion to approve the ordinance calling for the runoff election.
This Roland, I move to approve.
Second. Ben.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve item two, calling for the runoff election and the designation of the polling places. Any further discussion? All right. If you'll call the roll on this, please, Mayor.
So per passage of ordinance number two on emergency, Mayor McCombe.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter.
Aye.
Molina.
Aye.
Roy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Barrera.
Aye.
Juarezdo.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And we've got that set now, and you'll continue to work on the locations and firm them up.
Yes, sir. And when I do find the location, of course, I will communicate that to the council immediately.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is one that has a great deal of public interest. And we're glad they're here to answer some questions, to give us an update. And so it's a presentation both by Tech dot and Flatiron Dragados. So Ms. Sarah, would you introduce that?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and council. My name is Sarah Munoz, Assistant Director in Public Works. I also serve as the city's coordinator for the Harbor Bridge Replacement Project. So the item before you today, as the mayor stated, is an update to the council on the Harbor Bridge Replacement Project. Before we get started, I just wanted to recognize a couple of members we have from Tech dot here with us today: Valentina Olivares, the district engineer from the Corpus Christi office, and Ricky Daly, the public information officer. On the line today to provide the presentation is Ms. Lynn Allison, who's the Flatiron Dragados Public Information Officer.
Good morning. Thank you, Sarah. Can you hear me okay?
Again.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity today. As you know, my name is Lynn Allison, and I serve as the public information coordinator for the Harbor Bridge Replacement Project. For today, I've prepared 19 slides to walk through the project's progress and plans for ongoing construction, which hopefully you'll find negates some of the speculation and concerns throughout the community. I am joined by our project manager, Keith Armstrong, the project manager of traffic. Of course, Daryl Chambers, who you all know, and Hugo Fontreg, our project executive. So next slide, please. So we have an agenda for today. We're going to talk through the North Beach area, the South Interchange, and ongoing roadworks and associated detours in that area. The IH 37 progress and ongoing construction, the South Beach area with its milestones and ongoing progress. Precast yard milestone, our new engineer of record for the main span, which is Erap, CFC. The community outreach that we have ongoing in spite of the pandemic. And to address your question, at the end, if it works okay for everyone. So with that, next slide, please. So we're going to start in the North Approach area, and we are very proud to have the progress and the recent milestone late this summer in that area, which is the launching gantry crane, completed setting the span on that North Approach. And the foundation piles, which you can see on the right here, are staged in that area to continue down the road with the footings for that area. Next slide. Ongoing roadworks construction. You can see here that on the left side, we finished the southbound two-way frontage road, also a detour point that was completed in July. And the northbound frontage road on the right was completed in September of this year. Both frontage roads are serving as detours for the now-closed Burleson Street, or partial closure of Burleson Street, just under US 181, which is necessary, this closure is necessary for the ground improvement that we're starting there for Main Lane, US 181 construction. Also, for North Beach Roadworks, we plan to continue exit ramp work on, at Beach Avenue. The southbound frontage road should complete in the summer of 2021. We will continue work on northbound US 181 Main Lane and the southbound detour coming from Portland. Working on detouring, we are working on detouring the US 181 Main Lanes to the east or to the right side of this photo. And we can, so we can prepare for the construction of the new bridge, and that will take place, that traffic switch will take place in the spring, summer of 2021. Advance the slide, please. More on the North Beach area. We had a recent conversation, questioning, which we'll get into in further slide. You can see the south entry to the shared use path, but wanted to address the entry-exit point on the North Beach area. So the future entry-exit point for the shared use path, which of course is our pedestrian bicycle lane, wider improved lane on the Harbor Bridge, will be around Surfboard Avenue, kind of near where the groomers was formerly over there. And there will be a parking staged area between Burleson Avenue and that entry-exit point. And the parking area, if you look, I'm not sure if I have mouth control here, but you can see that will take place at where the abutment will occur, which is where those piles were staged that I showed you in the previous slide. Next slide, please. More outreach and communications that we had going on throughout the summer. Daryl and I met with stakeholders in the area, the attractions and residents, to make sure everyone aware, was aware of the significant closure we had there at Burleson. Daryl, our M.O.T., worked to replace signs for the detour routes directing tourists coming from Houston and Portland to the attractions and coming from the south side of the port area. Next slide, please. More drainage work going on along North Beach, and this will continue into next year. You can see both of these slides are recent, actually taken last week, with ongoing drainage work in the area. Here, you can see the waterline underground board and installation along Burleson, which will be completed this winter, this coming winter, and underground drainage installation, which you see on the right underneath the approach for the bridge drain. Next slide, please. So we're now on the south side of the project, the South Interchange and ongoing construction. Please take note of the complexity of this photo and what's involved to keep this interchange moving to constant traffic alongside getting completely rebuilt. This is an overview of the South Interchange. You can see Connector O, which is northbound 286 to westbound IH 37. We have beam setting and deck placement underway. The work will also continue on Connector M, which is the eastbound IH 37 here to the southbound 286. The South Interchange will continue progressing with work along the frontage roads. Leopard Street, of course, right here, you can see all the work going along the future Leopard Street corridor. And of course, IH 37 and ongoing State Highway 286 work. For instance, this weekend, we have a significant closure involved with the construction of Connector O right here. That's the northbound to southbound 286. We will be setting steel beams this weekend, which has us closing all southbound IH 37 Main Lane. So we've put that alert out, and we'll have electronic message boards in place to alert motorists of that inconvenience, but just for one weekend. Next slide, please. Here we get into some of the traffic impacts and ongoing impacts and detours. I'm aware that it's an inconvenience, and we've done everything this summer leading up to these changes, particularly working with our pedestrian community and the various outreach groups from the CCRTA and folks over at Metro Ministries. We've been in regular communication with them. I featured these photos in this slide to highlight the new bridges that were built as part of this project. On the left, you see the Staples Street Bridge, which is now a four-lane new bridge with a turning lane and five-feet pedestrian sidewalks on either side of that bridge. Comanche Street, which serves as a big detour for many of the uptown, folks working uptown and pedestrians trying to access the Metro Ministries area. There are also sidewalks on each side, new sidewalks on each side of this new Comanche Street Bridge. Each sidewalk is more than five feet on each side. Next slide, please. Here you can see a significant area of IH 37 ongoing. Here you can see a significant area of IH-37 ongoing, whoops, ongoing work. This is the expanded, newly reconstructed Port Avenue Bridge and ongoing IH-37 construction. The IH-37 westbound lane, Main Lane construction will be completed this winter, this coming winter. Off to the right and left of each side of the Port Avenue Bridge, you can see the start of all four future direct connectors. To the left, we have K and L, and to the right, we have O and M. The newly constructed Port Avenue Bridge also features a wider roadway with better grading, and will be a considerable part of the traffic switch we have also completed or planning for completion this winter. Next slide, please. More on IH-37, along with the bridges. We have the Nuaces Bay Bridge, ongoing construction associated with that. Here you see not only a wider roadway, but a raised clearance, where you have more than two feet of additional clearance for our industry partners coming out of the port area. You can see the westbound frontage road from Port to Nuaces Bay has ongoing construction and drainage work, which will continue into the fall of 2021. And the eastbound frontage road on the left side, also from Nuaces Bay to Port Avenue, with ongoing drainage work, which will continue into the fall of 2021. Next slide, please. I hope when you see this slide, you can really get a feel of how this, this bridge is taking shape, because you really have a perspective here of the, the line of the south approach and how it will connect to the north approach, and the vast amount of work that has gone on with the drainage to significantly increase the Salt Flat Channel on the left area. You can also see the, on the right side, the start of the stand-up, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of a stand-up paddleboard for surfing, the start of the shared use path, which will connect with Connector M, KL there on that side. We're very proud to have relocated the launching gantry crane in September to this area, which was quite a process, with a full police escort coming, which took about 12 hours over several days to relocate that crane. The first nine spans of this south approach were erected using a false work method. And now the launching gantry crane reassembly is complete. The load testing for that is actually being done this week. And once complete, the crane will start setting and working on erecting the span 20 northbound. You can see here, leading up to the, the first segments, the first spans, is the embankment wall and ramp and south approach abutment wall. You can see here on the left side, the direct connector K, and which is coming from, let's see, southbound to northbound IH-37. And on the right side, you can see, the east side, you can see direct connector L taking shape over here. And the south abutment wall is 80% complete with construction.
Hey Lynn, can you just show them with your pointer there where the Salt Flat Channel is?
Sure.
Show them where the Salt Flat Channel and the pedestrian walkway.
Yes, sir. So Keith was just asking me, I'm not sure if I have mouth control for this, but you can see the Salt Flat Channel here on the left, and then the shared use path here on the right, taking shape. Next slide, please. And we can certainly come back to any of these slides. So another recent photograph of our precast yard in Robstown, another milestone out there, thanks to that crew and their efforts. They completed casting all of the north approach spans, I'm sorry, segments, and the ones that haven't been delivered are still on site for the remaining spans to be done over there. They're now regularly transporting segments to the south approach area that are being staged for the span erection over there. And as of November 1st, we have only 102 segments remaining to be cast for both the north and south approaches, out of 1,869. Advance the slide, please. So I would like to introduce the mayor and the council to the AREP-CFC, our new main span design engineer of record. The next couple of slides are just to feature some of the work and other projects they've done. This group was announced over the summer that they would be coming in to take over the, the design and, for the main span section over the, the Ship Channel. Earlier this year, this design team, AREP-CFC, celebrated the opening of the Rose Fitzgerald Kennedy Bridge, which you can see here in this photo, in Ireland, and it's known as the world's longest-spanning concrete bridge. Between them, both AREP and CFC have been, been involved in more than 50 cable stay bridges, and they have been designing award-winning bridges for more than 60 years across 33 countries. Currently, AREP-CFC is in the process of reviewing the main span design for the Harbor Bridge replacement, and expects to have a certified design by this fall of 2021, next fall, I'm sorry, 2021. Next slide, please. Here's some work that I'd like to point out that was completed by the AREP side of the design team. I thought the similarities between our anticipated bridge and a project they just completed in, in California were a neat image of the similarity to work they have done previously. Here on the bottom left, you can see the replacement bridge designed by AREP, which recently opened at the port of Long Beach in California. It is the California's longest cable stay bridge design. Next slide, please. And to feature a project by CFC, the other part of the group, CFC, or otherwise known as the Carlos Fernandez Casada, and a Spanish structural, is a Spanish structural engineering firm specializing in the design and construction of, engineering of bridges. CFC is partnering with AREP and FDLC on the technical issues associated with the new bridge throughout the execution phase. Shown here is the Constitution Bridge, designed by CFC, which is a beautiful sea crossing which connects the island of Cadeau to the main span, I'm sorry, to the mainland of Spain. Here you can see, if you notice, there, this bridge has cables running down both sides of the bridge. The, the difference in our bridge design for the Harbor Bridge is that the cables will run down the center of this bridge in Corpus, creating unobstructed views on either side. Next slide, please. In spite of the pandemic, we have gotten creative on our community outreach efforts. Thanks to Renee and some, some of the folks at the city staff, I was able to meet with and speak to the Transportation Advisory Commission, TAC, on the work that we have going on and the project detours in place, and how we're addressing pedestrian mobility. On the top of the left side of the screen, you can see the future of the Leopard Street corridor. And in spite of the construction headaches right now, the significant improvement for both pedestrians and motorists includes safety features such as, you know, designated pedestrian walkways without having to cross through traffic light intersections. On the bottom right, we were excited just a couple of weeks ago to take advantage of the Lake Street pedestrian sidewalk, which serves the Winnebago and O'Veil Williams Senior Center area. We were excited to take a group from the Texas Homeschool Coalition and do a student tour with some of our project managers to get a really good bird's eye view. But they're standing in this photo on the left side is the bridge, the, the Lake Street Bridge, which actually goes over the Salt Flat Channel, and it really is a great vantage point for anyone who cares to take it, take in the whole south approach area of the project. So, next slide, please. In concluding my presentation, this is another angle of the south approach area. You can see the Salt Flat Channel on the right, Connectors K and L on the right and the left. You can see how the shared use path will join the northbound side of the bridge. Also, I just have to say thank you to the city staff, city manager's office for being so easy to work with for all of us along the way, to Martha, Renee, and Sarah, and Gabe, and others over there as well. This concludes my presentation, and I do want to remind you all that my office posts photos monthly, current photos, and five-minute drone videos that we do every month of the entire project, that you can get online on our website or on our Facebook and social media, and look at every time. One final note, I would like to put the council at ease and let you all know that FDLC is not stopping construction. We have work to be going on. We expect to keep approximately 300 people working through the project throughout 2021, and that includes staff, craft, and subcontractors. And that concludes my presentation. So we're all here for your questions. The next slide is just a contact sheet on how to reach my office and the project.
Good. Thank you very much. Sarah, do you have any comments, or we'll get some, any, Mr. Smith, you've got a ear light on, is that from?
Thank you very much, Ms. Allison, for the, the update. Just a, a few questions on there. So you're anticipating 300 working? How many are currently working? Employees?
So currently, we have 400 craft. We have, yeah, about 375, 375, 360 craft. On the staff side, we have 120, and on the subcontractor side, about 150.
Okay, so you will be having a fairly significant reduction in force?
I, I, I guess that's a perspective. Certainly, this being a large project, you know, all, all the numbers are big on this project. It's the natural evolution of construction progress. As progress goes, activities get concluded, move on to new activities, and, and we focus our, our workforce on the new activities that are being placed. As Lynn indicated, the work is moving forward. The North Interchange, the South Interchange are moving on, and we've sized up the project team to continue that construction.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the engineering's going to be, the review's going to be complete on the main span in fall of 2021. Do you have any idea, schedule-wise, are the segments cast for that, or how long will it take to, what, what are you anticipating now for having that main span complete?
Yeah, and I would defer that to our partners, Joseph or Valente, are you on the line?
Yes. Valente Olivares, Corpus Christi District Engineer, Techstat, mayor, council members. Thanks for the invite. So the, the construction timeline question kind of remains open, council member, because we need to progress the design a little bit more to figure out whether we're going to stay pretty close to what we have, or there's going to be any changes. So we can find some efficiencies in there in this design, you know, we can, we can push construction a little bit faster, but worst-case scenario is you're starting construction after design is complete. So when we say "design complete," that is, that's, that includes an independent check, a third-party SME review from, from the owner's side, and our Austin Bridge Division review as well. So it's all encompassing. So we, we want to hold off on saying what construction timeline would, would open main span until we progress design just a little bit more, so we feel more comfortable in where we're at.
So then are we looking where that threshold is in the fall? So we're looking at summer next year to be able to get the timeline, or do we have a timeline on getting a timeline?
Well, I would think springtime we should know.
Okay.
After we progress. We, we've just received a couple of package, design packages from the designers, so let's give them a little bit of time to make sure that we're not, we're not jumping out there too early.
And I don't know if you can address this, but there's a persistent rumor about the bearing on the north pylon on there. Can, can you address that to the, to the public? Because, I mean, it's out there.
So a consistent rumor, whether the bearing is in that?
A persistent rumor that, a lack of bearing, that the north pylon is sinking. That's, it's, it was on the radio this morning, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm sorry that's being out there in the public, but again, I'll reiterate, this has been reviewed. Third-party subject matter experts have reviewed it, independent checks have reviewed it, Techstat's Bridge Division has reviewed it. Now we have an additional engineer that we brought onboard to review it again, and that's , those same steps will continue. So I think everyone should rest assured that everything that's built out there currently will be reviewed again, and is, if it's been built, then it's, it's good to go.
Okay, so the, the north pylon does not have an issue, then?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Hernan?
Thank you. With all these significant delays, there's got to be some, a lot of additional cost. Where is the additional, I mean, we're partners in providing some of the funding for this bridge. Where's that additional cost going to, where's that additional payment going to come from?
Sure. So, so this is a, a state and federally funded project. We do have some assistance from our local partners, but with lump sums. So to answer your question, we have no agreement in place with the local partners like the city for any additional funds if there's overruns due to change orders.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just on a side note, I know that I asked this last time we were, we had this presentation on additional fill dirt that we could use on North Beach, if we, that has been, if those arrangements have been made.
So that, those arrangements would not be with the state, that would be with a developer, because they take ownership of whatever spoils come out of the project.
Hey, Valente, I can help out on that one.
Sure.
This is Keith Armstrong speaking with FDLC, and we have looked at the material on the North Beach that is in a floodplain. And with that being said, evaluations and permitting need to be in place before anything gets stockpiled or, or set in that area. We are looking at, giving some of the fill material to the city, both on the, the north abutment, which is structural fill, and it is good, good integrity material. Actually, I spoke with Sarah this morning about that, and, and the process of the evaluations, the permitting, all that kind of stuff is getting coordinated and moving forward. The small excavations you see going on now, some of them are coming from commercial locations, and that, that material is being hauled off-site into a, an approved land fill. But as it stands, the negotiations that we've been having are for the bulk of the material, which is in the abutments, both on the north side and the south side of the existing bridge. And we're in the process of working through evaluations and permitting. So when we get to that stage of diverting the, the traffic and opening up those abutments, the stockpile locations will be secured, and we'll be able to place that material for the city.
Thank you.
I don't see any of the lights. Anyone virtually have a question? All right. I don't hear anybody speaking up, so we appreciate the presentation. You have anything else? You kind of got brought up on a question. You have anything you'd like to say from Techstat standpoint? The good, best news I've heard so far, so don't retract it, is that there's no provision to come after us for more money.
There's no agreement in place. That's, that's correct. Just, I just ask the publics and, you know, the city, working well with you all, just some patience here. I mean, you know, the reason we did this is we removed the engineer, all safety purposes, right, for safety reasons. And we'd hate to just tell this engineer, just rush through it so we can get started in construction. We want to make sure we, we dot all our i's and cross our t's, because at the end of the day, we want to open a safe bridge that all of us can not have any worries about and drive across every day. So that, that's the, the whole goal here.
Well, and we appreciate that. I think somebody said, if you don't have time to do it right the first time, what makes you think you're going to have time to do it again?
Yeah.
So, safety, I think, is number one, and we do appreciate it. We have patience, of course. Everybody's excited about a new bridge. But I think the, also, the good news is that all the supporting structures and roadways are going to continue to be worked on.
Yes.
Because that, I think rumor at one point was that everything was going to be just shut down and wait for a year or so, and that would have been really a, a bad move. So we appreciate you and Flatiron coming together and getting that worked out.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? If not, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Likewise.
Merry Christmas, and stay safe.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Manager? Ms. Sarah, thank you. Richard, where are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Valente. And Lynn as well, if you're still on the call. Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Mayor and council, you ready for the city manager's report, Mayor?
We are ready to go.
Okay. Good. Just three things today, and then we're going to have Annette do a quick COVID-19 update for us. So, I want to begin by talking about our United Way kickoff. Last week, the city of Corpus Christi began its annual four-week United Way campaign fundraiser. The four-week charitable campaign runs from November 11 through December 9, and every year, the city does partner with the United Way of the Coastal Bend to raise money for local nonprofit agencies in the Coastal Bend area. And these nonprofit agencies serve residents not only in our county, but also San Patricio and eight other surrounding counties. So, it's an important endeavor. The United Way currently supports 64 local nonprofit agencies. So, 64 nonprofit agencies that help those who need help most in our community. They focus on education, health, and financial stability, to include increasing high school graduation rates, increasing the number of healthy youth and adults, increasing the number of financially stable families. Last year, I challenged the organization, in my first year here, to increase our giving to the United Way, and the organization responded. Our employees responded. In 2018, a year prior to last year, the city employees contributed a little over $79,000 with 27% employee participation. But last year, with that challenge, we raised $110,000, so an increase of over $20,000. And we had a 31% employee participation, which is a 4% increase. So, the employees came through last year with that challenge. We focused on it a little bit more. This year, we had a committee of staff members. We asked for volunteers, so regular staff members. It was about a dozen committee members, and they set the goal for next year. And the goal for next year, or this current year that we're in, is 200,000, right? That's a big goal. I told them I have confidence in them. If they set it, we're going to do it. So, we did 110 last year. This year, our goal is 200,000 with a 50% employee participation rate, okay? So, this is good. This is a good purpose, a good effort, and it's good for the region. We'll continue to challenge our leadership team, to engage staff, and encourage them to support the United Way, especially during these unprecedented times. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Let's talk about Thanksgiving, as that's coming up next week. And so, just as a matter of business, of course, most of city corpus offices, including City Hall, our public libraries, animal care services, municipal court will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and the day after, so Thursday and Friday, the 26th and 27th. Garbage and recycling that's collected on Thursday, that normal collection day, Thursday, that'll be moved to Saturday, okay, on the 28th. So, if persons put their garbage or recycling out on Thursday, don't put it out Thursday, put it out Saturday. City tennis centers, our city public pools, Councilman Hernandez, and the Oso Bay Wetlands and Learning Center will be closed on those two days. But we just had a presentation from our golf course operators, and our golf courses will be open Thursday on Thanksgiving Day from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00, and they'll return to normal operating hours on Friday. And then, all public safety operations, our police, fire, EMS, will be in full effect through the week. There's no change there. So, a complete list, a more exhaustive list of all our closings and schedules can be found on the city's website. If people need more information, just visit that website, and you'll see what's open and not over the next week. Okay. And then, finally, I want to talk about our financial position, and we do have a PowerPoint we're going to put up on the screen for you. So, we have preliminary year-end financial numbers for the fiscal year that just ended. And on our next slide, kind of give us an overview of what I'm talking about. So, we have preliminary fiscal year 2020 unaudited financial data. This is for the 12 months of our fiscal year that just ended this past September 30. And this will be an update from what we showed council when the budget was adopted on September 15, the budget being the 2021 budget. So, on our next slide, this shows the timeline for how we get to what we want, which is those audited numbers. The year-end audit began in October with the closing of the books, and our auditor has been engaged. That's Weaver. The city council approved a contract with Weaver a couple of years ago. They're from Houston. They're our external auditors. So, they will be working to complete with us our comprehensive annual financial report that'll be done by March. But today, we're going to give you some initial indications of where we ended up the fiscal year. So, on our next slide, this shows our revenues, and there's a lot of revenues here, but let's look at that bottom-line total. And we're going to show you the budget, the estimate or the reestimate. This was done in light of the COVID pandemic and the impact to the economy. And then, that final column is our unaudited actuals for the 12 months. So, and let me take you back a little bit. So, last April, or late in April, with the COVID, we, instead of 271 million budgeted, we estimated best-case scenario, or worst-case scenario, 250 million. That would be a $21 million difference or shortfall to the best-case scenario, 257, and that would be a $14 million shortfall. You may recall that number. We kind of landed on the 14 million. That was in April. In July, we revised it based on more data to a $261 million total revenue for the year, and that's about a $10 million shortfall, right? But by the end of this year, then, with the actuals, we're actually short 9 million. So, we did a little bit better than that estimate, estimated difference of 10 million less. We came in at 9 million less for the year. So, not too, too bad, given there were some indications that we could be short anywhere from 21 to 14 million. In the end, we came in short at 9. If we just look at some of the major revenues, property tax, when you compare it to budget, about 1.5 million less. That's more so just from collections and not necessarily the COVID pandemic. But we do know sales tax was impacted. You can see, when you look at the budget compared to the actual, about a $3 million difference. Still not too, too bad. If we moved on to public safety, that number there is about a $2 million difference from the 18 to the $16 million estimate. That's primarily from towing and storing vehicles from our impound operations with the police department. And that's in part from there just being less traffic out on the highway during the pandemic. And then, municipal court, that's where our traffic fines. We know that there was a decrease of about $1 million in traffic fines due to less driving, really, what happened. And then, the recreation revenues is the last big area, a difference of about 1.5 million, and that's from the after-school program, known as our latchkey program. So, on our next chart here, this shows the spending. And as you know, we came up with an aggressive financial spending plan as part of our recovery effort that we enacted in April, and that means we minded the business like any business person would. If your revenues are coming in less, we spent less. And so, we held positions vacant. We held off on certain purchases, and we were looking at our expenditures weekly with the executive leadership team. So, you can see that our estimate that we developed ultimately for the budget reflected that financial recovery plan. It was $18 million less than the budgeted amount, and we basically had to live within the means. And the unaudited actuals were coming out just pretty close to that, 265.3 million, compared to 265.7 million. So, we stayed within our means in the end, that revised schedule of spending based on the pandemic. So, this next table is the most important one on the next slide, and this walks us through where we were at the beginning in terms of our financial ending balance, and then where we ended up for the fiscal year. So, at the beginning of the year, the year being, it would have been 2019, we had a beginning balance of just under $75 million. The revenues for the fiscal year that just ended, the actuals, were 262.3 million. We're using some of that CARES Act money in that fiscal year. We'll use more in these next three months, but we used $3 million of the CARES Act money. And then, our expenditures, as they were reduced, ended up at being 265.3 million. So, the net sum is we're right where we started. There's no change in our financial position. It continues to remain strong, very strong, in fact, at 75 million in our ending fund balance. That 75 million consists of 54 million in our rainy day fund. That's the financial policy of the council, 20% of expenditures in a budgeted financial reserve or a rainy day fund. And then, the unreserved balance is 21 million. That's on top of that for that total of 75 million. So, this is great news for the city. Our financial position, despite COVID and the reduction of revenues and the impact on the economy, we're coming out right where we started with a very strong financial position. I just have two other funds, real quick, or three, really. On the next slide is our Hutt Fund chart here. So, this shows our revenues and expenditures. We knew the revenues would decrease a little bit. We expected about 2.8 million less in the estimate. We actually, though, with the 13.5 million, came out 800,000 better than that estimate, still a little less than the budgeted amount, but not too, too bad. On the expenditures, correspondingly, we reduced spending in this area as well, most notably in our infrastructure and doing some of the improvements at the American Bank Center. And so, we planned on spending 1.6 million less at that 15.7 number, and in the end, we're spending even less than that, so 14.4, so about 1.3 in less spending. Our next two charts, this next one will show us our water fund, and there's a lot of information here, but the revenues and the expenditures, revenues on top, expenditures on the bottom. This shows a similar picture of we adjusted the spending based on the anticipated revenues. The revenues for the water were about $6 million less than what we thought, our estimate. We reduced the estimate at budget time. That's primarily from some of the adjustments in the usage of it because of COVID. And we got a little bit more in the end of 141.6 million, so a little bit better. But you can see on the expense side, we reduced spending by 7.7 million, and we actually spent a little bit less than that at the end of the year of 146.2 million. And then, finally, in the wastewater fund, this one has the same type of setup where we had a bigger revenue budget, but by July, we reduced it. And in the actuals, we came in a little bit less here, which is not the best report, but 700,000 less in revenues than we estimated. However, on the expense side, we did make a big reduction by July. The expenditures in the wastewater side were 92.5, and we reduced those to 81, or about 10 million less. And then, we actually spent a little bit less than that with the close of the year. Okay. So, in summary, the general fund audited results are better than we thought they might be, better than projected. Our Hutt revenues were a little bit higher than we projected, and we do have to give a lot of thanks to Brett Otting, who, with his use of data, each month when those checks were coming in, they were almost exactly what he projected. So, that helped us out a lot in terms of business development. And as we expected, our water and wastewater revenues fell a little bit short. However, we reduced expending to live within our means and stay within budget. So, on the next steps in our final chart here, we will be coming back to council in February with the first quarter of this fiscal year, financial update, and we'll close the books in December for the first three months of this fiscal year. And then, it takes us about a month to get everything organized. And so, one of my city managers' reports in February will bring you the first-quarter budget and finance report. And then, our comprehensive financial report, that'll be audited numbers for what I just went over, will come to us in March. We'll also get an opinion from the audit firm, and we've done real good in that category, very strong opinions, pretty generally clean audits for the city of Corpus Christi, which is something to be proud of because it's, that's not hard to, not easy to come by, I should say. So, the, we'll review the CAFR comprehensive financial report with council in March. That concludes that presentation, Mayor, and as well as my other comments. We have Annette here. I don't know if there's any questions on this, or if you want to go right into the COVID update.
I think we want to hear from her, but I mean, this is too good a report to pass up, I think.
Right. Yeah.
And, you know, my congratulations to you and the staff. This is the first, I've seen it, I guess, the first time council members have seen these numbers. But I think it's a tribute to you and your staff of paying close attention, and, you know, I think it should give the city, citizens, a sigh of relief that we survived. And we didn't, in Corpus Christi, as many cities did around the country, have to lay off anybody from the city as a result of the economic conditions or from COVID. So, we continue to try to provide our service in different forms and fashions, but I tip my hat to you and the staff, and we'll see. Hopefully, we're... I think everybody is looking and anticipating January the 1st, 2021, so we can get 2020 behind us. But we'll see what this next year brings, but this is good news, and I just applaud you and the staff. Mr. Smith, any other council members here with their lights on?
Thank you. Peter, on your expenses on Slide 5, you have a $6 million carry forward encumbrances. So, is this monies that haven't been spent and we're just carrying forward?
Yeah. So, that, in those departments above, or those categories above, every one of them has some type of, has some form of an encumbrance where a purchase order has been let, but all the product hasn't come in yet. So, these are earmarked monies that, with a contract approved, a purchase order, it just, the final material hasn't come all the way in yet. So, as the months progress, that material will be spent.
So, actually, our spending is $6 million less, so we're encumbered, but a lot of times, we don't carry forward those encumbrances.
That's true. Yeah. So, right. Some of them will fall or release.
Yeah. Well, that's... And I would like to reiterate the mayor's comments. We had a strong reserve position before this pandemic started. We were above what council policy is to the 20%. For a city, that's a strong position anyway, and to end up maintaining that reserve balance. So, if we get a storm or something else going through the pandemic, making those adjustments, cutting the budget to reflect the cutting of expenses on there, I can't tell staff what a great job you have done protecting the, this city's financial position, the reason that we've had two credit rating increases, I think, and how we compare to our cohort of other cities on there. You know, we're not struggling. So, again, thank you, staff, for maintaining that financial discipline in the long run that's so important to this city. And just a quick other comments on that. In the last four years, we've reduced our debt by a couple of hundred million dollars, a little over $200 million. And we're maintaining very strong cash balances, not only reserves, but cash balances, I think. Eddie, you sent to me our ending balance, $800 million in cash. A lot of us encumbered naturally. But, you know, this city is in great shape. Again, thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Real quick on wastewater, I wanted to come back to that in the sense that I know we had some budgeting errors early in the year with regards to that. Does this number include that budgeting error?
Yes, it does. Yeah. So, the reestimate and then the actual, well, the reestimate fixed those errors, both on the, or adjusted for them, I should say, both in the revenues and the expenditures, and then the actuals, you know, demonstrate the final actual result.
Okay. And since we are in a consent agreement with the EPA, I want to make sure that we are making sure that we're doing the things that we need to do within the means that we have to address those issues that we have on that consent agreement. Can you kind of speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, you sure can. So, the reduced spending that is shown here does not impact any of the consent decree. In fact, in the budget that city council approved for the fiscal year that we're in right now, has increased spending for the consent decree, exactly in line with what we agreed to with the federal government. So, it does include a new team of staff members to begin to chart out and implement the agreed-upon improvements in the wastewater system, and it does include a big investment in wastewater line replacement and other first-year improvements in that plan. So, the error that we talked about was a factor of forecasting revenues that would come in. We did meet with the consultant that we used, and we did make some adjustments in our model, and we're going to use those same adjustments.
And we're going to use those same adjustments in the model going forward from now on. So we think in this budget that's underway right now, we're in good shape in terms of accuracy of data. And we made the adjustments as necessary, as we talked to the council about months ago.
Okay, and lastly, I think with the change in political, at the federal level, the political government at the federal level, you know, the EPA may be a little more hostile than in the past. We probably need to be closely monitoring the status of the wastewater consent agreement. You can include that as part of your report sometime in the future, maybe on a quarterly basis, so we can keep an eye on that. I don't want to have the EPA come back down on us.
Yeah.
If you can kind of talk to that.
Okay, that's a good idea. We know Miles is tracking closely the actual signature. The city approved it and signed it, and then the federal government went through their process. I think at this point, do we have a signed agreement yet?
We have, we had a signed agreement since August. However, our agreement, while it's effective against us, the federal government has filed their, the federal government filed their suit in September twenty-fifth, but that's, that suit was a predicate to being able to make that consent decree effective. We are just now finishing up the mandatory period by which the federal government had to put out in order for it to be able to sign the consent decree on its own, in order, in other words, it gave an opportunity to interveners to join in the federal lawsuit. We haven't had that so far, so now it simply has to progress through the federal bureaucracy to get the signature on the other side. So we are committed, but the federal government has not countersigned, and the, and because it's a consent decree, it requires the signature of a judge to become effective. And the judge, of course, hasn't signed because the federal government has not officially signed on to the consent decree.
Well, assuming everything goes according to plan, what I want to avoid is that we're not, that the EPA comes back on us in a non-compliance fashion. So I want to make sure that we're addressing what we need to with wastewater proactively.
Yeah, councilman, right, we're doing that. In fact, we, you know, even before the consent decree went through the legal process, we had already, for two years, had been improving the wastewater system. Our number of overflows has been reduced significantly, I think by ninety-three percent. So we're already, this is part of the business plan, there's no doubt about it. The consent decree is, in my opinion, just a kind of a perfunctory after-the-fact document, because the business model, the capital improvement plan, the budget, the rates are all set on improving that wastewater system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Walharto had her light on. Did you want to talk, or did you decide not to?
I have a light on.
Oh, maybe Mr. Roy. Mr. Roy, did you have your light on?
I did, but I took it off.
Yes, I think.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Well, again, great budget report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Keep up the good work.
We do, Annette's going to give us an update, a quick update on COVID-19. I did, though, just to close out that financial report, want to thank Eddie, who's here with us, and our budget director, and Constance, it's Constance, in fact, they are chief financial officer. They spent a lot of time this summer leading their teams while a lot of us were more focused on COVID-19. And, but thank you, Constance and Eddie, for a good job, and in part, a lot to do with their professionalism and moving things forward on a financial perspective. So thank you. Okay, Annette, we're going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Annette Rodriguez, Health Director, and I am here to give an update on the COVID-19 cases in Nuasis County. First slide, please. So I'm going to start with the death rate for the United States. It's at two-point-two-two percent. If you look at for the state of Texas, it's at one-point-eight-three percent. And for Nuasis County, somehow or another, we've crept above the state of Texas to one-point-nine-eight percent. So we really need to keep an eye on those numbers. Next slide. The cases by months, we've all seen this graph, and it depicts, you know, the first wave that goes up to almost twelve-thousand cases in July, and then came down in October. But if you look at November carefully, those numbers have creeped up over the October cases, which probably indicates the start of the second wave here in Nuasis County. Next slide. So the health district cases, the daily cases for the last two days, if you look on the last, on the left side, you see the thirty-three, the seven, and then the one-twenty-three, one-twenty, and the numbers kind of came down. Today, we're looking at around seventy-eight new COVID cases as of noon today. If you look at the weekly cases over the last month, from October seventeenth through November thirteenth, you can better depict how we're seeing that increase. So one-seventy-one, one-eighty-three, three-eleven to four-seventy-seven. Next slide, please. So some of the indicators that we see at the health district are our phone banks. We start seeing an increase in the number of phone calls that are being made to the health district, and that's what you see here on this bar chart. On the right-hand side, from October seventeenth to November thirteenth, we've had three-hundred-and-forty-three calls, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight, four-hundred-and-seventy-one, and then this past week, five-hundred-and-seventy-four calls. Basically, people are calling in because they're symptomatic. They want to know where to get tested, when's the next testing site, what's the website to self-register. And they also feel like they've been exposed either at their work site or large gatherings, which include the Halloween activities. Next slide, please. The COVID-19 deaths by months, we've all seen that in July, we had our peak cases, but in August, we saw our peak deaths. And so in November, we're at eight deaths to date, midway through November. Next slide. The COVID-19, the vaccine benefits. So we're all hearing that there's two vaccine candidates, Pfizer and Moderna, that are getting very close to getting emergency use authorization as to start that distribution plan. So the vaccine is one of the best interventions to combat COVID-19. The vaccine works by imitating an infection, so it actually helps to boost your body's response, your antibodies to that. And the vaccines are effective tools for controlling pandemics. So we really want to encourage people to consider getting vaccinated when those vaccines do arrive. We do know that they're going to trickle in initially. We do think that Pfizer will be first, and then Moderna will follow close behind. But we want to encourage as many from the community to get vaccinated at that time. Next slide, please. So we're still signing up providers here in Nuasis County. We have a total of twenty-five providers that have registered through the Department of State Health Services. Eleven were previous providers for what we call Texas Vaccine for Children, but there's an additional fourteen new providers in Nuasis County that have signed up. Providers were included in the twenty-five, the health district, as well as Amistad is included as well. So you can, if you want to be a provider and you're currently already providing vaccines in the community, you can enroll at enrolltexasiz.dshs.texas.gov. Next slide. So weekly, I've been showing you the flu cases in Nuasis County compared to the same time last year. And so if you look at the slide on the right-hand side, the graph, you have twelve on week forty-four this past week, you have twelve flu cases, and compared to last year at a hundred-and-thirteen cases. So we are doing much better with our flu cases. We are seeing both type A and type B flu currently, but again, very low number of cases. So we're hoping that the public health strategies that we've been talking about are being helpful. So why the shot? Why get a flu shot? Because it reduces the number of flu cases. It also reduces the amount of missed work or school. It also prevents flu-related hospitalizations and deaths, and it minimizes the duration of the illness, as well as maintains you and your loved ones' well-being. Next slide. We are currently having flu shot clinics. This is regular seasonal flu shots. These are free vaccines, and we have one scheduled for the nineteenth, this Thursday, the health district, from nine to four. And then we will have another one scheduled for Friday at the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds from ten to three. Next slide. Some of the Thanksgiving considerations that we want to make sure that the public hears about is think about limiting the guests to family members only this year. If you're inviting extended family, ask them to limit leaving their house for two weeks prior to the celebration. So right now, that they're not practicing any risky behavior, which is going out to large, you know, congregate settings, so that way in anticipation of spending that time with you for the holidays. And consider virtual activities for those who cannot join or are considered too vulnerable and do not want to risk picking up the virus. Next slide. So I'm going to talk about the risks just quickly, from high risk to low risk. The highest risk this Thanksgiving are the individuals that decide to go shopping in the crowded stores on Black Friday. That's going to be putting you at highest risk for picking up COVID-19. Also, attending or participating in crowded sports event without wearing a mask. Also, attending large indoor gatherings, that's also going to put you at highest risk for picking up COVID-19. Medium risk is attending a small dinner outside with family and friends, social distance, wearing masks, or attending an outdoor sports event while wearing a mask appropriately, covering your nose and mouth. And the lower risk for picking up COVID-19 is a small, family-only dinner, a virtual dinner for extended family members, shopping online rather than in person, and preparing meals for family and friends and dropping them off. Next slide. So what are some of the impacts of post-Thanksgiving? So we are fortunate enough that we can look at the Canada's numbers. And Canada celebrated their Thanksgiving October twelfth, as you can see on the graph on the right-hand side. And since that time, their numbers from their first original wave have just been increasing exponentially. And that is not what we want to happen here. Next slide. So the last thing that I'm going to mention is that the health district, effective next week, November twenty-third, we will be moving from a Monday through Friday work week to Tuesday through Saturday. This request was based on scheduling COVID-19 testing clinics, flu clinics, mass COVID-19 vaccination clinics to provide additional Saturday coverage while working to minimize overtime hours. Last slide. So please continue to wear your mask, wash your hands frequently, don't touch your eyes, nose, or mouth with dirty hands, so you don't infect yourself, and social distance whenever possible, and disinfect commonly touched surfaces, especially during the Thanksgiving holidays, if you have other family members around. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Annette. With the prospect of vaccines coming out fairly quickly on there, I think Pfizer said they'll have forty million doses by the end of this year, and Moderna, twenty million. Can you remind us on the, how that's going to be allocated, not within, so who, in the sequence on there? So there's four cohorts, and how all of that's going to work, since we're possibly weeks away from that?
Right.
Who should be lining up to get a vaccine?
Right, so, and that's a great question. And that decision on who is the first or the second phase or third phase has not been solidified at this point. Dr. Hellerstadt, the Commissioner of Health, does have a panel of experts that are working with him to make those decisions. What we believe is it's going to be the hospital staff, the healthcare workers will be first, because again, it'll just be in such small amounts, doses. And so they're even asking us, if you have a hundred-and-twenty people that work at the health district, what if you only receive twenty vaccines? Who would they go to? And so we're basically saying the people that are working the drive-through, that are in the front lines, those are the individuals. And so everybody's thinking along those lines. Now, as that faucet opens a little more, then there'll be more groups. We believe the second group will be the nursing home staff, then the residents, as well as sixty-five years of old and older with comorbidities. So again, those specific groups have not been established at this point. I think a lot of it is dependent on how much vaccine is ready, how quickly, before they'll give us that plan.
So we're waiting on the state and on how we're going to allocate.
Yes, and we do meet with them via WebEx weekly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anybody out virtually have a question? All right. Well, we thank you. It affects a lot of people in town. We want everybody to stay safe. We had received notice this week that the husband and wife, both were doctors, the doc, he contracted COVID and succumbed to it. So it affects everybody. So we want to make sure that we do stay safe, but at the same time, we've got to continue to live our lives best we can under whatever normal is. So, but thank you. We appreciate all the work you and your people do.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Annette. Okay, Mayor, that concludes my report for this morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There's no minutes, is that correct, Ms.?
Yes, sir, not this week.
All right, we have no board and committee appointments, so that goes to agenda, consent agenda K, which is items four through twenty-one. And does anyone have any items on four through twenty-one? I think a lot of these we've already seen.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one.
Seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd also like to pull item number sixteen, please.
Sixteen?
Yes, sir.
One-six, okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of items four through twenty-one, with the exception of sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one. Is that correct?
That's right, Mayor.
All right, entertain a motion for that?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion second for items fourteen through twenty-one, except those have been designated and pulled. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, let's, items, I believe, number sixteen, right? Is that the first one?
Yes, that's the first one.
Item sixteen?
Requested to pull that, and I just had a question for the city manager. I know we had recently approved the Vision Zero Plan for this year's budget. Do the improvements listed in this agenda item, are they, do they have any, anything to do with the Vision Zero program?
Yeah, Councilman, thank you for raising that issue. They do, and they were not, these were not included, though, as part of our total funding that we showed as part of the budget that would be allocated for Vision Zero. So this is on top of those, which is a good thing. And working with Alyssa, with the downtown management district, these were brought to our attention, and we're going to do them as part of the Shoreline Ocean Drive Rehabilitation Project, the Revive the Drive effort. So this will, this will provide much-needed pedestrian improvements across Shoreline Drive. You know, it's a six-lane roadway with a big median in the middle, and it's real tough to get across several hotels there, to get across to the seawall. So this is, this is exactly what Vision Zero is about, which is that the zero incidences ultimately in the city in terms of people getting hit by a car or some other moving vehicle. So these will go towards that program, Councilman.
I appreciate that. You know, I, I'm very glad to hear that, and I'm very glad to hear that this doesn't affect the Vision Zero budget, but it is above or in addition to that budget. And I'm also happy to hear that these improvements are being made downtown. I think this is the first step in some, in those improvements that I was mentioning to you, Mr. Zanoni, about the downtown area, and some of the ideas that I expressed to you. I think this is an important piece to that. So I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
That's good, Councilman. Yeah, we, Richard Martinez is here, I'm going to have him say a few words as well, but I did speak with him about some of those concepts that you and I talked about, and we have, we're going to be bringing more forward soon. But Richard, go ahead and...
Sure. Councilman, thank you for the question. Richard Martinez, Director of Public Works. And so this area, as a city manager, had... And so this area, as a city manager had explained, along the Ocean Drive area is going to, we're going to be improving crosswalks and adding a HAWK in those areas for pedestrian improvements. And yes, it does support Vision Zero. We've been working, again, with the Downtown District to make sure that we can improve those areas. But we're also looking at signal work throughout downtown and how we're going to improve crosswalks throughout the area as we're maintaining the streets along as we're going through this. So there are multiple locations that this consultant is going to be working on, but again, identifying a lot more in the Ocean Drive area.
And Richard, just explain the HAWK, in case people don't know what the acronym is.
So the HAWK is for pedestrian crossing, like a mid-block crossing. So we're not crossing in an intersection or a corner. So a HAWK would give the drivers additional notice that we've got someone that we push in a button to get across the road. So additional lighting and notification to drivers to slow down and stop, actually stop. And also, we're going to be improving the median so that there's a refuge area as you're crossing Ocean at that HAWK location.
Now, that HAWK, similar to the one at Cole Park?
Yes, sir. There is one already on Ocean Drive.
All right, anything else?
Motion to approve.
Excuse me?
He made a motion to approve.
He made a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Did you have your button pushed there?
Yeah, I just, I just had one question. With what Councilmember Malina said, the first crosswalk that we were going to improve, which was supposed to be completed in March, and I know with COVID, we got a little bit behind on that, was the Oak Park Elementary School.
Right.
And where are we at with that? I know that we were in the design phase, is my understanding before, but I want to make sure that I understand, I mean, I think it's great that we're going to go ahead and start working on downtown, but I don't want to forget that school on Leopard, which was going to be the first project. Where are we at with that right now?
So we're finishing completion of the design currently, right now, and then we're going to start construction here in the next 30 days.
Awesome. Okay. I look forward to updating them. So thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on item 16? If not, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposition. Item 17, Gil was issued?
Yes. Okay, this, and Richard, you may be able to answer this. Since this is a concrete street, and I appreciate that, and I believe it's for the continuity, correct?
That's correct.
In terms of the material under, used for the storm drain, are we looking at concrete or have we looked at any alternatives?
We have currently, we're currently looking at the alternatives you mentioned before. But currently, for this design, it's not being addressed, because it's under an arterial roadway. So any of the road, any of the drains underneath it would be either RCP, which is reinforced concrete pipe, or box culvert. So again, if it's a large box culvert, there's nothing in, at least at this point, that can replace that. But we are looking at what you had told us earlier to look at, sir.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because you said your concern was not, not necessarily under concrete streets, but under asphalt streets.
That is correct.
Since this is concrete, I think this would be an opportunity to look at that from that perspective, to use a high-density polyethylene-type pipe that would probably save hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Councilman, this is Jeff Edmonds. The majority of the storm drainage on this is very large.
Are they box culverts?
I think it's beyond what's available in that, that material.
No, with the box culverts, you're not going to be able to do that, but I'm talking about the actual pipe that connects them. So I just think that we should take a very close look at it so we can see how much we can save. Anything we can save would allow you to use that funding for other, other sources, so. But if we're not, if you haven't designed it that way, that's fine. Thank you. Motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second on item 17?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, item 19. Who's that? Is it you?
Me.
All right, go ahead.
And looking at the budgeting for this, I just wanted to kind of have an understanding that we're looking at this from the whole perspective of all three items in the CIP, 18-024A, 18-025, and 18-026. Is this the design for the entire amount or just 18-026A?
I think some of this would apply to the entire project, if that's your question. It's for the environmental permitting.
Okay, so, and just looking at it from the, from what you have in the CIP, now, the CIP from this year doesn't have any design amounts in it, but in the previous year, you had $124,100 for design in this particular 18-026A. In 18-024, you had $529,000, and in 18-025, it didn't exist in previous year. So looking at, looking at it, you have a total of $653,100 in design budgeted, but you have now a total of $907,000. There's $254,000 that you have in addition for design. Is that going to come in out of the construction portion of this project?
It's not going to come out of the construction portion. I'd say it's being funded out of the project, if that's the question, and obviously, we have gone over what was in the CIP budget for the engineering.
Okay, just so I understand here, okay, you have, between all three projects, 24, 25, and 26, out of all the, when you budget it all, you have $16,300,000 and some change for this entire project. You add in the $653,000 that was removed from the CIP, from last year's CIP budget book, and you have a total of just under $17,000, $17 million. Will all three of these projects be under that $17 million, including this additional design cost?
Well, I can't answer that definitively until the project is completed, because as you know, we've just started construction on all three, but that is certainly our hope and expectation, and we'll try and manage to that outcome.
There could be some unforeseen condition, Councilman, that we're not...
No, I understand that. It's just the CIP has, I mean, if you're not going to, the design numbers don't match, the design numbers were removed from the previous CIP, there's just no real way to track this from, from, from my perspective. We need to make improvements to the CIP by a long shot, by, I mean, it is just, there's just no way to keep abreast of what's happening, where the money's going. This only talks about the 24 segment, right? But then you have 25 and 26. Is it all being done as a single aspect? Or is all, is the same designer? What do we, I mean, what exactly is happening?
Right, yeah, this item, as Jeff Edmonds just said, covers all three sections.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah, it was one designer, it was three construction projects, and we have one contractor got two segments, and another contractor got the other segments. There's two contractors working on three construction contracts. Those bid packages were all prepared by a single designer.
Okay, can you, can you provide the information as a whole to council as to what the projects actually cost and how it's broken down? Because this is just not enough information, and it doesn't tie into the CIP.
Okay, we'll get to that, Councilman. The CIP, too, just for the record, are other people watching, so I think this is our second year as a city doing a capital improvement book or budget document. And I know we need to continue to make improvements based on your assessment, Councilman Hernandez, but we did make some big improvements already, this, in this new one that was effective for this October, and we'll continue to work on it with the departments. I personally met for, I think it took us two weeks with every department, and went through project by project, and tried to better align the budget, the forecast of each project budget and the detail therein to include design, construction, timeline. When you're dealing with millions and millions, it gets a little tougher, but we know we...
I get it, but we're dealing with millions and millions.
Right. I'm just saying, the, the chance for things to change are probably greater in terms of the construction world, but the point is, though, that we'll continue to improve it. Next year, we'll make even more improvements in the budget document for the capital plan.
Okay, and on the backside, we also need to know whether it went over budget, is there funding left over, that kind of stuff, so we can know where that money's at.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, that, I may, I'll defer to Councilman Smith to make the motion.
Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 19. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, item 19 passes. All right, says we were a little ahead of the 130 target, so we have no, no public hearings?
Yes, that's right, ma'am, no public hearings, but Ms. Embry is presenting on 21.
Number 21?
Yes, number 21.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My goodness, I apologize. Number 21, Resolution to Adopt the City Corpus Christi State Legislative Agenda for the 87th Legislature and Federal Legislation Priorities for the 117th United States Congress.
I do have a presentation, if you'd like to see it, or if you just have a specific question?
No, actually, ma'am, I thought this was an important thing, so I asked that she do give her presentation on it.
Okay.
Okay.
It is full circle to stand here before you today, Tammy Embry, Director of Intergovernmental Relations for the city. Two years ago, the legislative agenda was the first item that I brought to council in this new role, and so we have now completed the full circle of the biennium to start this process again, and I don't think... Oh, next slide, please. I don't think any of us could have forecasted the two years that we had ahead of us when we stood here two years ago. Just a brief overview of what's in the 11-page resolution before you. This table really addresses the bedrock of what is our legislative policy. We support federal and state legislation that will protect policies previously established by the city leadership, the Charter, ordinances, resolution, and master plans. We support local control, protect and enhance city revenues, reduce and eliminate costs of the city, and produce, and provide anything that provides increased educational, job creation retention for the city of Corpus Christi and the Coastal Bend region through the Port of Corpus Christi, public schools, community colleges, universities. And I don't think in this biennium, we could actually think of our major stakeholders and not include our medical partners as well. City opposes legislation on the state and federal level that nullifies or undermines the city's policies in the existing charter, ordinances, et cetera, diminishes the authority of cities to regulate and manage their growth and development, imposes unfunded mandates, undermines the principle of home rule and local control by the city, and results in the loss of revenue or negatively impacts potential revenue growth in the city. Next slide. We have our contract lobby team that we work with. We are very lucky to have consultants who have been with the city on a long-term basis and have a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge on, and are very familiar with the internal workings of our organization. Larry Myers represents us in Washington, DC, and then we have Focus Advocacy in Austin, Brandon Agamalian, Kurt Sidletz, Snapper Carr, the partners, and Andrew Kiefer works extremely close with us as well. I believe Snapper and Andrew and Brandon are on the phone, as well as Larry, if you have any specific questions. Next slide. The path ahead. Just as we couldn't imagine what we've gone through over the last two years, I don't know that we can really accurately predict what we're going to go through over the next year. COVID is obviously influencing everything tremendously. We are adjusting as we go. That's going to shape a big part of the conversation in Austin, as well as in DC. It has already affected the way we advocate. In Austin, where we would have normally spent the last year in interim hearings all around the state, the current House rules prohibit the House from doing virtual meetings, so we have done interim comments, they've written requests for information. And just as a signal to where the session may go in the Senate, the first hearing that they are going to hold in person was supposed to be tomorrow, and it has been moved to December 7th, will be on taxpayer-funded lobbying. We're going to face a transition of the presidency in DC, by all accounts so far. That will come with not only a change in who occupies the White House, but also who occupies every agency, from cabinet-level officials to sub-cabinet officials, down to the appointment of Schedule Cs who really implement the administration's policy goals across the board. In Austin, we're facing a transition to a new Speaker of the House. Speaker Bonin did not seek reelection. Dade Phelan out of Beaumont is the speaker designee, has the support, and he has so far appointed his chief of staff, and also appointed a bipartisan special committee that will determine how the processes are going to work in the House this session. Are we going to be able to be in Austin? Will the Capitol building be open? Will hearings be in person? Will they be hybrid? Will they be all virtual? The hearing on taxpayer-funded lobbying will only be able to be attended in person by members and staff. All testimony, there will only be invited testimony, and those will be, that will be done virtually, and there will be a live link for others to watch. Next slide. On our federal legislative priorities, you have the detailed agenda. I'm just going to go through some main ideas. Advocate for additional resources to respond to and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. We've been working hard on that over the last few months and have been very successful in our efforts, because it wasn't clear when the CARES Act was passed whether or not cities and counties under 500,000 would get resources. And the cities really banded together. There were at least two or three 80 to over 100 mayor letters sent to federal, state officials working on that issue, and we will continue to work in concert with TML, National League of Cities, the Big City Mayors Group, to continue to get the resources, work on the resources we need. Protect the military missions in our community, protect federal funding programs that are essential to city operations, increase federal transportation funds coming to Texas. Texas has the, the lone status in the country of being the only donor state to the Federal Highway Trust Fund, which means we send more resources to Washington than when we get back. This has long been a priority of TechDOT, this has long been a priority of the I-69 Coalition, with which we are members, and will continue to work on federal highway funding. Reform FEMA processes to streamline disaster recovery and work on issues regarding duplication of authority. All of you are aware that we have been in a three-year process to get Packerie Channel restored, first with FEMA, now closing in on a process with the Corps of Engineers. And there's definitely some room for improvement in this project, and every chance we have a chance to work on it, we're going to continue talking to our House and Senate offices to work on that. Also, to increase economic development tools. Two of the items that we added to the agenda this year involve advocating for increased numbers of opportunity zones in our region, also advocating for increased local involvement of where those opportunity zones are placed, and then advocating for continuation and improvements to the historic tax credit. This is an issue that's very important to the Downtown Management District and some of the projects that are going on there. Next slide. On state level, our priorities are, should look very familiar to you all, preserve local decision-making is at the heart of everything we do, oppose state of Texas preemption of municipal authority to, by taking away your powers, local officials, to make decisions. You are most directly responsible to your constituents, dare I say, your neighbors, because I know many of you get stopped in the grocery store and ask about different decisions going on. So we think as a home rule municipality that those decisions need to remain local. We oppose state preemption of land use, building, and development issues, generation of revenues to deliver essential services, and our ability... of revenues to deliver essential services, and our ability, anything that would affect our ability to issue debt and write the ballot language that appears on bond election items. We also oppose legislation that would prohibit the city from using public funds to be able to communicate with our legislators. It is, there are over seven thousand bills filed every year in the Texas Legislature. On average, over two thousand of those bills will affect our city operations in some way, shape, or form. Last session, we had a very concentrated effort to take away the option for cities to hire legislative consultants, to hire intergovernmental relations staff, to be able to advocate the grassroots activities through groups like TML, National League of Cities, and to be able to hire legislative consultants like Focus Advocacy and Myers &amp; Associates. And we will continue to oppose that at every turn. It is not a level playing field if only private industry can go in and advocate for change, but we have no voice in that process when it affects our ability to protect our citizens, protect the healthy and sa, health and safety of our citizens, and protect what is developed in our, in the quality of life that our citizens have. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide.
I'll just move on.
So the next issue that is on our legislative agenda is COVID-19, the pandemic in public health. We support legislation that requires equal treatments of all local governments and prevents state officials from placing additional resources or restrictions on the city's use of federal funds from any future stimulus legislation that may come our way. And this is an answer to the different treatment that was experienced by the direct recipient cities who received money under the CARES Act and those who received money through the state. There were six eligible categories of use for the CARES Act money, and the state actually put a requirement that we spend seventy-five percent of it on the first three categories and only twenty-five percent of it on the second three categories, and in that second category included things like economic development, the physical changes that we needed to make to City Hall, such as the Plexiglas dividers you see here, the PPE and other equipment that we needed to protect our ongoing operations. So we want to make sure that when this moves forward, that we don't have those types of issues in the future. We also support a simplified reporting system for disease surveillance. This is something that has been discussed with our hospital partners and with the health department. While there's been tremendous improvement in tracing of COVID-19, there is still room for improvement, and every other communicable disease that our health department faces and tracking still operates on the old system that was in place when we started COVID-19. So there's definitely room to secure additional resources to advocate for improvements in that process. The other one, the last one on this slide is to protect and strengthen access to behavioral healthcare, including mental health and substance use disorder services. This is under COVID-19 in public health, but really spans the several departments and discussions that I had as we were putting together this agenda for your consideration. I heard this issue from our homeless unit, I heard this unit, this issue from our police department and our fire department EMS folks, as well as our medical partners. When Memorial Hospital was closed, that really took away the only residential treatment option for mental health services in the community, and I know that our hospital partners are working on various different opportunities and programs that could help, whether it be inpatient resources or an intensive outpatient-type program. The county's hospital district has actually put out a recent report this summer looking at this issue, so we're looking at that to see if there's some issues that we may be able to work together on and find some common ground, but it is a strong need and really affects quality of life and health and safety of our most vulnerable citizens, so a high priority to work on this session. Moving forward, continue with support for our military community and missions and installations here on the coastal bend, supporting at least thirty million dollars, which would be level funding. We would certainly welcome an increase in DI grants because there is no shortage of projects to be worked on in military installations here or across the state, and that actually really helps us make the case to defend keeping our missions here should there be a future run around the BRAC. Disaster assistance and emergency management reform, this is going to be another issue that is huge on the marquee of priority legislative issues. In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been a lot of discussion of local management of this pandemic, and so you've already seen several pieces of legislation filed that would look to limit local power, and being a coastal city that faces hurricanes and other natural disasters, we want to make sure that we still have the ability to make those decisions, continue operations, and that the, the decisions that have to be made in the moment as that disaster is happening are still allowed to occur. So we will be weighing in stridently to protect the ability for local governments to be able to pass ordinance and issue orders that address the needs of an emergency or disaster. We also have TWIA windstorm insurance that is always at the forefront of our residents, and we support windstorm insurance reform that would provide affordable equitable rates for the Texas coast, oppose unnecessary rate hikes from the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association. Getting to the end, we support continued funding for our air quality monitoring program through the Coastal Bend Air Quality Partnership. If you'll remember, two sessions ago, the governor vetoed the Rider Seven funding, and we were able to restore that last session, and so we want to, in such a tough budget year for the state, it's going to be important to make sure that we fight for every funding priority that we have. And this is another session issue coming back from last session. We want to preserve the power of the City of Corpus Christi to appoint three members of the governing board of the Port of Corpus Christi. Last line. On homelessness and affordable housing, we want to make sure that we support legislation that continues to increase and find innovative solutions to create options to increase the supply of affordable housing for low to moderate income families, and support the rehabilitation of units used in federal housing subsidy program, and to look for additional resources to create additional housing offlist options for the homeless in our community. And with that, I will take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Just an FYI, we had a meeting with the county judge yesterday and shared our legislative agendas, and they shared theirs, pretty much all on the same page, maybe a few tweaks here and there depending on the county perspective of the city, but working together, it's always better in the legislature than working against each other. So anybody have, Mr. Nennis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I mentioned this earlier with my concern with the EPA, and I noticed you put in a few things there with the Waters of the United States and how that could affect us, if that can come back. Also, the lead and copper rule for water utilities. Can you give some details on that?
That is an issue that the, the water utility has brought up in our monitoring that could have some excessive testing requirements that would actually go out and make, require us to test in schools, in daycare facilities, and other things where we wouldn't normally test, and so that could be an issue of internal typing in a facility that could cause that problems where we would normally test our, it would just, it would put in some, some onerous requirements that we want to make sure doesn't have a huge unfunded mandate impact on us. I think you will see some additional activity out of the EPA, but we monitor that very closely. Miles will be monitoring very closely with his consultants that have worked on the consent decree. We work in concert on those issues. Sharon Bailey Murphy is our environmental services manager here at the city. She pays very close attention to what's going on at EPA and TCEQ and works closely with me, so we will have multiple folks that are, and Larry keeps an eye on things that are going on to affect cities as well. So we'll have multiple sets of resources keeping an eye on anything that could potentially negatively affect us coming out of EPA. And I will also add to this, our legislative agenda starts here each year, headed into session in a new Congress, but there will be more issues that come up as bills are filed, that folks in the community bring to us, that our delegation bring to us, and this will be just the start of a communications process with the council, and so as new issues come up and need to be considered, we'll come back to you and brief you on those issues and get guidance from you on how you would like the city to approach those items as the policymaking body of the city.
Well, I asked that you take, keep close monitoring of the EPA. They were very active in the last administration, in the previous administration, not the one that's current. To your point, the Waters of the United States type deal.
Well, I spent over ten years of my career working in the electric cooperative industry. We burned a lot of coal. We got to be pretty familiar with the processes of the EPA and still have some good contacts in the agency, so happy to keep an eye on those things.
Okay, one thing that you did not mention that I came to thought, this, a lot of discussion had been in the aspect of, of to defund the police, and to our credit, to our Chief, Chief Merkel's credit, he has done a lot, an active, robust job in getting grants from the federal government and other things. Do you foresee that, you know, with that effort at the federal level to diminish police forces to continue, how do you see that going forward, and is there anything that we can do within our legislative agenda to address that?
I'll address that two different ways. I spent about an hour and a half sitting down with Chief Merkel and his command staff when working through that, just so that I could get a better appreciation for all of the issues being discussed in the news, in different policy proposals. What I can unequivocally say is Corpus Christi is leaps and bounds ahead of the curve in implementing many of the reform ideas that are being discussed. We made de-escalation a bedrock of our police operations a long, long time ago, and there are, you can kind of go down the list of some of the different proposals, like Eight Can't Wait is one of the popular ones that was being tweeted, of eight different types of reform proposals that some of the advocacy groups were wanting police to implement, and we've implemented them. So defund the police became a rallying cry, and I think if you listen to some of the post-election analysis of what caused challenges across some of the races, I know I've heard several interviews from different high-profile national Democrats that have said that actually hurt their calls in different races at either be house level or state and local level races, and so I think you're going to see a shift in how that's talked about. I don't necessarily think it was a funding issue as it was wanting to reallocate resources to address ongoing issues. One of the things that keeps coming up in a lot of these discussions is how, is mental health and issue in dealing with citizens that are in a mental health crisis, and is that appropriate? Are the police the appropriate folks that should be doing that? And that is one of the reasons why we see a priority in here to increase mental health resources and other tools for our community so that it doesn't fall to, only to our police to be in that situation each time. Does that answer your question?
You went off into a different area than what I was referring to, but I mean, the word itself, I mean, speaks, speaks loudly, right? Defund the police. That was a rallying cry that you had mentioned before, and I just want to make sure, since it isn't listed in your priorities, as to address those issues with our legislation is to not reduce the amount of grants that are going to law enforcement.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, well, it actually is, it's protect all of the funding sources that are essential to city government, and that is in the federal and state.
Well, I wanted to call it out specifically because that was something that was much discussed and pushed forward, and we need to make sure that we protect our, our police
Yeah, I mean, we didn't call out every single grant program, but the Violence Against Women, the Justice Assistance, the, I can't remember the actual, but the JAG grant that they get every year, and there are several other grants that Pat has already sent, Eldridge has already sent me a list of, to make sure that we're checking all of those resources when the federal budget and the appropriation bills come out. So we, we have a detailed list. We talk about things in a little bit more general capacity in the legislative resolution and concepts, but I think I've definitely got the message loud and clear that we're not interested in a defunding situation.
Okay, and lastly, since we do have some members from the port here, want to make sure we state that we like the current arrangement in terms of how the port is structured, and that's what we're supporting. Is that correct?
The way it is listed in there is to preserve the power of the City of Corpus Christi to appoint three members to the board. That's our current arrangement for the City of Corpus Christi.
Just so I understand, that is the current structure that we have?
We currently appoint three members to the, the commission of the Port of Corpus Christi, and we want to preserve the ability to appoint three members to the, the Port of Corpus Christi commission. If you would like it worded in a different way, that, that's why we're here to discuss it.
Well, that, I mean, to that point, I mean, we like the current structure of how it is set up currently, the seven-member board, is that, is that correct?
We don't have any problem with a seven-member board, and I think in the last legislative session, there was an attempt to change that, and the city and the port.
Well, like I said.
Communicated and said, leave it alone, we don't think there's a need to change, and I think the legislation lets, listens to us.
But that doesn't, it's not stated here like that. I believe maybe we should probably state it that way.
You can state it any way you want to, I mean, we're, but I don't think there's any move on our part to change it. I think Port Aransas was obvious, they were going to, not Port Aransas, but San Patricio County, after the last legislative session, they said they were going to try it again. I don't know whether they're going to do it again or not, but our position is that we, we appoint three, the county appoints three, and San Patricio appoints the one, and that's, we're fine with that. Somebody say something?
If we're okay with this language, the way it is stated, it doesn't state what the mayor just said. It only states that we want to make sure that we continue to have three, three appointees, which is fine. I mean, that's.
We discussed that with the judge.
I think this is going to be an issue that will be one of those that we come back. What, the reason I chose to do it that way is because those are the only three seats we have control over. This was suggested language for the council. If the council would like to amend that, to change it in any way, that is, you are the policymaking body of the city. I do. I do expect that once those bills are filed, and I think everybody that has expects bills to be filed again this session, I mean, San Patricio County has hired a lobbyist over the interim. And what, those would definitely be, once those are filed, those will be one of those that I come back and talk to y'all again. And if, at that time, as we did last time, we did a special resolution on that issue. That was a standalone resolution and then got added into our legislative agenda. So, I just, I just chose to do it as a, to preserve the ability for the city to appoint our commissioners because those are the ones that we have control over.
I mean, in visiting with the judge yesterday, I did not hear any indication on her behalf that she had any interest in changing it, and we're certainly not interested in changing it. And that's.
It would still be a local bill that requires everyone to be on the same page.
And it was JM who represented San Patricio that appointed it. So, I mean.
And Senator Zafareini.
So, I think we're, I think we're ready to go up and defend our position. We just, and that's why we state that we're containing it.
Okay. If you're, if you're, Mayor, if you're comfortable with the language, I'll be okay with it.
I mean, are you interested in changing it or no?
I just didn't think it adequately stated the, our intent. But if you consider that this would suffice, I'll defer to you on that.
Well, I mean, if you don't have any attempt, I mean, if what exists you're happy with, then you defend what exists. And I think that's basically what the county judge and I said yesterday in our two agendas.
Do you plan to preserve the ability for the county to put to appoint three? We plan to preserve the ability for us to appoint three.
So, I think if there's an attempted change, we'll circle the wagon and see where we go. I'm not interested in changing it.
No more questions.
Mayor, I've got a, I've got a comment. This is Paulette Wajado.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, just going back to the police topic, I just want to underscore the comments that were made and just make sure that we actually double our efforts in seeking the state and federal grants for our police and fire departments moving forward.
Yes, ma'am. That is, we are committed to maintaining those funding levels. And I know that through my conversations with Chief Markle, he is very willing to be an advocate on any of these issues that we need him to and would like to be a part of those conversations.
Great, great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. And I just want to make the comment, you mentioned the DAG grant and also the advocacy in Washington. To me, this is a real emphasis point because we spend a lot of time up there as a community protecting our defensive, our installations on there. So, I'm glad to see this separated out. You know, we've done several DAG every time we go out to the Naval Air Station, that they're so appreciative of how we're protecting our facility here with it. And I think we just did one a month ago. It was the gas line on there. We did security fencing on there. We did the truck waiting facility on there. And I think in Washington, this helps us so much besides having that advocacy. So, when we're out there walking those halls in Washington and, you know, we went through a giant list, but protecting our defensive installations on there is, to me, a very high priority. As one of my favorites, good old TUIA. We know that that's going to be a battle coming up on there, that it's, it may be a chance to completely revise the system on there. And the $100 million we citizens pay a year in windstorm insurance, you know, we're going to have a fight on that. And I always like to, Representative Hunter, you know, we've already been talking about that.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And I will, I will add one to your list for the military. We are in the final, working out the final details and hope to bring to y'all in December the closing of the land swamp that has been 30 years in the making. So.
One more of those things, we can scratch it off the list. Yay.
Got a, one more win in our military support column that's coming very shortly. And I will add, just overall, one of the things that I, I don't think we talked about, you talked about the TUIA reform. You know, I think one of the things to keep in mind, even in discussing the port issue, the huge overarching things that are going to take over this, the state's going into this session with a large budget hole. And that's going to take a lot of the air out of the session. There are some folks who really believe this could be the fewest bills ever filed in this session because members are really being asked to pick their priorities and what they want to fight for. And if you're not planning on seeking a hearing and moving a bill, maybe you shouldn't be filing it. And so, it's going to, I think the field of play is going to be narrowed. There are going to be a lot of budget fights in making sure we, and there's going to be a lot of defense. The budget, disaster powers, COVID-19, if the census gets done in time, redistricting will happen in this session as well. So, you've just named four huge things that are going to take a lot of time and a lot of effort. And there's going to be a lot of defense played on the part of cities.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Entertained a motion, then, and approval of item 21. For a second? All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. No public hearings, right?
That's right, Mayor.
Yep.
All right. Another good news item, I think, is the establishment of the super bag. So, we got the bag monster coming?
We do. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm David Leifelt, Director of Solidway Services. We're here today to bring an ordinance amending chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances. This is a good news item that, excuse me, we started back in March. We brought to you a pilot program to start this operation to provide the customers a new way to get rid of small items, home remodeling and demolition, some construction items that aren't currently available through our current pickup system. The big and bulky item wouldn't get these items. The brush collection didn't pick these up. And so, we were able to come up with another operation that has been very, very successful. In the six months, we have sold 60 of the super bags. This was done with word-of-mouth advertising, people hearing it on the council presentation, and just talking about it in the community. We have serviced those without incident. There's two little side stories to tell. One, a family was cleaning up a house after a deceased relative. And one of the brothers came from Houston, and he brought a super bag that was a privately sold super bag from Houston. He was, found out that it wasn't serviced by that company here. He called us to see what we could do, and we were able to help him out and provide the service. So, that was a real win for the department. And then, just last week, we had one of our super bags collected prematurely by one of our crews that was set out during the brush and bulky system. The crew was so enthusiastic and energetic, they picked it up before the guy was ready. And we quickly rectified that and took care of it. Other than that, we have had nothing but praise for the system, and it has gone very, very well. It's self-supporting. It pays for itself. The people who use the program pay for it, and so, we recommend approval of this ordinance.
All right. Any comments? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, David. Could you just explain to the public how you go about the super bag and the cost of it?
Great. Good, good question. The super bag is a large, heavy-duty bag that is about eight foot long by four foot wide and about two feet tall. They can be purchased six days a week at the J.C. Elliott Transfer Station. The cost is $135. That includes the sales tax fee, that includes the collection, that includes the bag, the service, and the disposal. So, they can go to the transfer station, pick up a bag. When they take it home, they get to choose when their trash day is. They roll it out, they fill it up at the curb. They've got seven days to fill it up. And then, once they get it full, they call us, and we are guaranteed to pick it up within three days. We have been successful in picking it up in between one and two days every time so far.
Thank you.
You bet.
Move to approve.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. I think Ms. Nennis wasn't here.
I said aye, by the way.
We have no briefings, is that correct?
Right, Mayor, no briefings.
No executive sessions?
No executive sessions.
All right. And our next meeting is when now? December?
December 1st. If that's a Tuesday, let me just double check here.
All right.
Let's see. Yeah, December 1st is our next meeting. That's, that's usually the first Tuesday of the month we don't have a meeting, but the council approved the schedule earlier that has that meeting date. So, December, there'll be the 1st, and then the 8th, and then the last one will be, the third one will be the 22nd to do the canvassing of that, of the runoff election. So, three in December.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no further business, we're adjourned.